I don't know, I mean, we asked for up to date numbers for the street sounds.
Does that?
No. Is he on the, yeah, I can read my back. Hey Brian? Is it right there? Come on in.
I just, I gotta say, you guys grilled me and that was such an easy interview, y'all ran me over the coals, I mean.
Well, we know who we're dealing with.
Well, we like him. Obviously, you like him.
I think it's updated numbers and stuff. Yeah, look, look right here. Thank you.
It's been okay, guys, sorry.
Brian, we got here the two items, the street sounds item, Santa Magic Service Agreement, kinda as a refresher, cause we let it sit for too long. So first, um, I think the easier of the two is the Santa Magic Service Agreement, unless you have street sound in front of you.
I got, got both.
Okay, so Santa Magic, we know the grant, the bottom line is zero dollars, but just explain real quick what Santa Magic would do. Kinda synopsis of what we got in front of us.
Well, we have the continual issue, um, we have had, and it, it was brought to light, I think, a good bit, uh, last year. Laura's in here, but I know she brought it up in terms of the decorations and how that's, uh, we're falling behind our sister cities in the, in the area. Uh, our objective would be just to help put together a strategy, bring together the meaningful parts of our community that are integral to that, such as the chambers, such as Parks and Rec, Beautification Council, um, you guys, the Arts Council, anyway, bring all those major factors together, have a conversation, let's establish what our goals for the CDR. Um, our primary focus would be just on aesthetics, we're not in event planning, that's, that's not.
That was a big question or wondering.
That's not what, no, this is just about.
Just you decorating and?
Just helping to bring focus on our decorations.
Okay.
That's it.
That part's not gonna cost the city anything.
Uh, well, there's a, uh, that all depends, that's up to you guys. You know, we'll pull this group together and establish what the plan is, what everybody would like to see, and then come back and present to you guys. Um, there's a lot of different options, if you wanna take the time to get into those now, I mean, there's purchase options, there's lease options as far as decorations.
But the bottom line was, I think in the contract, it would be, we would, city would split the cost with Santa Magic up to five thousand, is that correct?
Uh, you would reimburse fi- up to five thousand to Santa Magic for out-of-pocket expenses, should we incur any, if you decide to counsel it.
So it's not a split?
The agreement.
Okay, so say we decide on doing something and we need three thousand dollars worth of decorations, and you go buying them, we reimburse you three thousand dollars, is that?
Yeah, but that wouldn't happen until we have approval for you, from you guys, to, yeah, to, to spend that money.
So, and, and again, we could say, go ahead and then have a committee and say, well, we, we don't need any other decorations, we just need to do the best of what we got, and then y'all do.
And that may be the case this year, you know, we'll see what everybody, you know, what everybody's desires are. Let me give you an example why it's important to us. Uh, I think there was a small group that made an effort to do something at the corner, uh, right there by Robert Spraberry last year. You know, it was cute and quiet, but here's the thing that people don't, about that, don't understand, they don't know, okay, you've gotta anchor your trees down. You've gotta, you know, pick certain decorations that the wind's not necessarily gonna move from right there out into the middle of, of Broadway. Those are things that, you know, we're aware of, that others aren't. Uh, and that's a, that's a minor thing, but those trees, uh, I mean, it was cute when it was first set up, but.
It took long.
It was very windy, and they were on the, they were on their sides, laying on, you know, laying down a lot more than they were standing.
Well, in my mind, it's not gonna hurt, sorry, in, in my mind, it's not gonna hurt to do this, have the committee come together and meet and decide on something, and if we don't want to purchase anything, we're not out of pocket anything.
Don't do anything.
Let me ask you something, so even if we were to purchase something, like, that stuff will be stored, like, we bought it, and we can use it next year too, right?
Yeah, that's.
So, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm trying to think, be.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you wanted to buy, uh, like, a, a really nice, um, uh, outdoor artificial Christmas tree, you know, they're not cheap, they're, you know, a nice one's thirty grand.
Show, show me a picture of what you have in, in your head, cause I know, I know you have pictures.
Don't you do something in Chelsea, Brian?
I do, but I hadn't done any rendering, because I, I wouldn't until we got past this point, it'd be a waste of energy, uh, but yeah, I do.
Do you have any of those pictures? Any that, cause I know Chilwellburg waits till after Christmas, and then they go, the city gives that committee a small amount, amount, and that's all they have to work with, and they wait after Christmas, and then go buy the decorations, you know, everything's half off or fifty percent off of Christmas decorations after Christmas.
But if we decide the first year, it wouldn't be like that, so.
It wouldn't be all blown out the first year.
So is it, is it kinda like the thing that's, um, at the traffic light in front of the MAPCO, is that something like you're talking about in Chilwellburg? I just need a visual.
Uh, actually, the, the one that they put right there, uh, behind the, um, museum, uh, is their official city, uh, Christmas tree, if you've ever seen it. I think it's a, uh, twenty footer.
Well, can it be something other than a Christmas tree, I guess that's what I'm asking, you know, I think it's a sleigh, do y'all know what I'm talking about?
Oh, and that's something that a group of the community citizens built.
Okay. That's what I was thinking, if it was like something like that.
And, and that's part, you know, we could bring on clubs and stuff and say, okay, would somebody wanna build a, a giant sleigh? And they may undertake that and build it.
One, one more thing, so if, if we were to do this, like, would you be responsible for, um, I guess, scheduling things in front of this, whatever we're gonna be able to do? Like, would we, like, I don't know, maybe?
No, that's, I put that on Parks and Rec and the Chamber, they've already got a lot going on.
Do you know what I'm saying, like, say if we, we agree to this and we, we decide to, we decide a spot, we're gonna do this, that, and this is where we're gonna do the setup, so would there be an option for people to come and maybe take pictures and, is that, am I going in the right, do you understand what I'm saying?
We've had that, the past couple of years, we decorate Central Park.
Central Park, we decorate that.
We leave it up from lighting till Christmas.
So what's gonna be different from what he wants to do than what we've been doing at Central Park?
He's just saying he wants to organize.
Yeah, we just, and, and enhance what we've got going on.
What he's saying is actually a good idea, because you have all these little individuals who wanna do individual things, we could bring all those people together and do big things.
Okay, well, that makes sense.
Just bring it in again.
I think a good example is what the city of Obalika has done, um.
Which is where I've learned a lot.
But see, but I, I haven't seen it.
And we can give you pictures of that.
But you know, I'm, I'm a visual, I just need to see, yeah, I just need to see.
That's a good example of permanent type decorations, it's not, you didn't give us your old Christmas tree type decorations, it's professionally done. Like, one of theirs I love is, they have this, these giant ornaments that sit in the square in Obalika, and they have these beautiful reindeer that are, um, uh, have lights all over them, that they're reusable, they are professional decorations, and they're used year after year.
I got another question, maybe two, so if we were to do something like that, of course, we would purchase that, so the city would own that stuff, and then next year, um, would the committee be responsible for setting that stuff up, or would we have to bring somebody in and pay them to set it up again?
Well, our.
I know I'm asking crazy stuff.
Ultimately, ultimately, first, here's the, that's the Chilwellburg setup.
And, and then the reason I asked what I asked, so, okay, they got that, so Chilwellburg gonna set that up every year, we get our thing, we're gonna set it up every year, so every year it may not even be five thousand dollars, because just say we wanted, we just needed to replace, yeah, we needed to replace one of the H's, I'm just trying to.
Or just add something small.
Or you, you know, you can choose, well, we're gonna lease, and you can, you get a lot more, and then that company that you lease probably.
Not change it, but you.
Yeah, you just keep getting the same stuff.
Somebody else owns the decorations and you lease from that company.
You don't store it, you don't worry about it breaking.
You don't put it out, you.
I don't know about all of that.
But that's part of the committee coming in and figuring that out, and presenting to us.
Well, I see, I still need to know, so I can, you know.
That, that was my question, y'all figure whatever out as a committee, it still runs through the council, correct, we, do we, we still approve and all that?
Absolutely, right, you know, they were.
As far, here's our plan, and we say yes or no.
We certainly could not create any expense and then just assume that you're gonna reimburse it, it has to come back.
Got one more question, on the lease, can you change it every year, or do we do the same thing every year? Or do you know?
You can do whatever you wanna do, you can add, you can take away, if there's stuff you didn't like, you know, there's, there's any number of things. But long term, I can tell you, your most viable solution is, 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 is purchasing, because you do reach a point that. And the biggest thing is, you get what you buy, you know.
I know, you get it, but I still, yeah, I just, I'm, it's in my head.
You, you got, so you just have to invest in quality stuff that's gonna be there, that's gonna, gonna be, uh, continue to be relevant, the stuff that.
Well, it's making more sense to me now, because now that means, I'm looking at it like, even if you buy something, it's not gonna be five thousand dollars every year.
No, no, in fact, if you decide, you know, if you decide that you want to buy a, um, a thirty foot artificial Christmas tree, well, you're looking at about thirty grand. But then that tree will last you twenty-five, thirty years. But you're making the downtown area an attraction, where people come out, they're walking about, and that's what we want.
One more question, this committee, cause you said we reimburse up to five thousand dollars, so anything over five thousand dollars, the committee pays for? Or are you just not gonna spend over five thousand dollars a year?
We'd stay on our budget unless we reach the.
Well, if you put it like that, I think leasing would be the best option, because you don't wanna go, obviously go over five thousand dollars.
Well, that's why I asked.
You know, maybe the first year I would definitely lease, I'm just saying.
What I would say is probably, what you can expect to happen is, our little group will get together, uh, and then decide, okay, what's the vision? How do we create that, what's it gonna cost to create that vision, and then we'll present that to you, and you decide then.
Who's gonna put the group together, Brian?
That's what Santa Magic's contracted to do.
Yeah, but the only reason I ask, is I don't, we don't wanna get everybody excited, and then we don't know what we're getting into, so we commit, we created this committee, and then you come and we're like, no.
No, we'll start out, if we'll do something, make a small, I think the group will come together and say, okay, this is what we wanna do, this is the first year, this is where we wanna be.
Well, and also take the people that have individually done it over the years, put it together and make it flow.
Exactly.
Would you at least include somebody from the beautification?
Oh, yeah, there, absolutely.
Okay, well, I don't, I don't think that's gonna be a problem, we need to, of course, formally adopt, uh, approve the contract, um, so I, it's not on there, we can put it on the next agenda and approve that, um, street sounds.
All right, I, I prepared a, a one pager on, on street sounds, if you guys needed a refresher.
Um, are these numbers up to date?
Uh, yes, they've been, they've been updated, um.
I'll get another one.
Total project, uh, cost has increased by a couple thousand, a little over two thousand. End result means we're looking at a, a, a high-end estimated city contribution of, of twelve to twenty, and the CDA will match that, and then plus take care of the annual cost. And, uh, I asked Laura to be here, uh, today, um, because she's also been in, in contact with some other cities, uh, such as, uh, Gaston and Oxford, uh, and I'd love for her to explain what they have to say to you.
I deal with Gaston a lot too, remember, I called you, and when I went through Gaston, cause I was in, in downtown inspecting some stuff, and I was like, man, this, it wasn't even, I know it was Christmas time, but they had just a subtle low music, it's not like you can carry on a conversation while you're walking down the road.
Yes, it's not overwhelming, but the, one of the biggest values it'll be for our downtown area is also muffles sound, it helps bring down the street noise.
Yeah.
And, and that's great for our outdoor seating environments that we have, but Laura, what did the merchants and other cities say to you?
Well, this was from Athens, Alabama, um, and, uh, speakers were mounted on all four sides of their courthouse, they have a square, um, but still, uh, they also added a really neat feature, they did lighting around their courthouse, that the lighting can change according to season, which is not what this is, but our community loves the sound system, we play sixties music during our cruise ends, um, Christmas music after Thanksgiving, love songs at Valentine's, if we have a big trial going on, we can dial the music back or turn it off. The merchants love having music, they say it adds to the atmosphere of strolling around and shopping. Um, and that, uh, and then Gaston, um, she said, uh, let's see, it's brought a positive, it's brought positive comments for, from everyone. The most common comments are that it offers a great ambiance as they walk down the street, at times, we even notice people dancing along with the music. It has been the best addition that we've ever made to downtown Gaston. Um, it's, we, they control it from their office, um, this is their, their Main Street community, and Kay, who sent me this, is the Main Street Director. They, we control it from our office, um, so we know what's playing, we use homemade music, um, and, uh, she just talked about how positive, um, the whole program was for their downtown community, merchants and residents.
Question, who would control, if this was to happen, who would control our music?
CDA.
CDA.
What kind of music you like?
Well, that, it's, it's a cloud control, and so it would be, um, a shopper-friendly upbeat type music, that's, uh, it would be moderate, it, it's a.
You ain't, you ain't, Waylon Jennings and Merle Haggard's probably out.
Uh, yeah.
I'm a no.
It's gonna, it's just gonna be feel-good music that's just gonna put, make people happy and put them in the mood to shop.
We're gonna take, go ahead.
But also, um, I have a couple questions, I'm sorry, Asher, but also y'all said that even like, if there's a football game going on, you could broadcast the ballgame through it?
I lied.
Not a lie, who said that?
I said I lied.
You lied?
It's tell mother.
Yeah, the only way we can, we could do that would be if we had a commercial-free, uh, broadcast that was taking place, that, that could be played.
But I don't know that that would be necessary, cause we have, you know, we have local coverage that can be broadcast in restaurants if we needed to, so.
Yeah, we, that, that's, that.
You got TV forty-seven, Radio Mountain Bruce?
I got, I got one more, I got two more questions, so if that's possible, would it be basketball too, or just football?
Basketball.
I don't think we need to base this on the foundation of sports, I really don't, this is creating an atmosphere for shopping, it's not, we have local radio stations that provide that.
So we have local radio stations that provide music too.
They do, but this puts the music outdoors at, um, you know, I, I just don't think that that's the whole premise of street sounds. If it's something that's added, I think that's great, but I don't think the decision needs to be made on whether it's promoting sports in the community.
Now, if you had a lot of it.
But I'm saying, but we do live in a, a sports community, I mean, and we, we have children, and it's easier to, to go al- along with things when everybody's getting something, that's, that's how I look at it, but I guess since you put it that way, I guess.
Well, and you know, say, basketball's in the playoffs or something, and you got a local coverage that wants to air, it can, it can happen.
But I mean, to me, the way, the way I look at it, if we pay for this, it's gonna be with taxpayers' money, and it's gonna be, everybody's gonna wanna get something, it may be something, if they're downtown shopping, it would be nice to hear whatever, I mean, I don't even watch football, so.
Well, most of our retailers are not open at seven at night when a football game starts, um, there might be two or three restaurants.
Sports, I didn't think about that.
You know, they're not open then, so people aren't shopping, um, when sports events are taking place.
If you had, uh, like, like during Christmas, a couple times last year, we had, uh, a piano player out there, somebody playing a keyboard and, and do it, okay, you could take that and livestream it in, uh, so that they, they could be heard all the way up and down, uh, that block, that whole area.
Yeah.
Well, and, and we'll take this, and the main thing is, we have to look at the twelve thousand two and see where it can come from first, so, obviously, that's got to be a key.
Can I just add one other thing?
Uh-huh.
I think making this commitment to your downtown businesses, whether they be service, retail, restaurant, I think showing that you're committed to contributing to their, the improvement of their shopping environment is gonna carry a lot of weight. These people have invested large amounts of money in our community.
And the ones I've talked to are on board with it.
Well, they've all signed.
But everybody has invested money, and that's why I was asking about the game, cause, cause the way you're selling it, it means it's just for the, just for the businesses.
This is their personal, they're not just paying taxes to live here, they've invested their entire lives in this community, and that carries a lot of weight. And I think we really need to think about supporting them and showing them that we care about improving the environment for their business in the downtown district.
I understand, I think we need to.
And the shoppers.
Yeah, and the shoppers too.
I mean, and you think about.
So that means that's everybody, not just the business owners.
Yeah, the shoppers are getting a benefit from the y'all.
And that's, and that's why I was looking, that's why I was thinking the way I was thinking.
It's a, it's a win-win for both sides of the, um.
You pretty much think, you know, two months out of a year, out of, out of, out of the year, you're gonna be playing Christmas music, you know, just, just, just about the entire night.
Let us take this and the updated numbers and mold it over and see where it could come from potentially, and we'd have, we'd have, if we do anything, it'd be on the next agenda. So, now we have this up to date.
Thanks, Brian.
Appreciate it, thank y'all for all your.
See you, Ryan. Michael too.
Uh, yes, but real quick, we had a discussion on FMLA extension for a street department employee, they've got doctor's notice, checked all the boxes, so there's no issues there, right? And that note, that email is in there, so obviously we would extend that discussion. I mean, not discussion.
Is that, we've already started the music?
Yeah.
Sound like.
All right, Michael, I, go ahead, and you've got what he's mentioning in your packet too.
I'll stand back here, if y'all need to go over there, stand up. So, there has been another change on the drainage project, the first one, we brought to y'all in East Clay and South Church. Um, they got through with that and moved over to the next location, which was, uh, First Street and Calhoun, and they got through with that area, got it opened back up, went to the third one, which is West Walnut and North. And two, three things have happened, one, the sanitary sewer was marked down the middle of the road, and it turned out being not in the middle of the road, in the curb line. And where we wasn't crossing it, uh, with one of the, with one of the pipes coming in, there was no conflict, but when it was in the curb line, then it became a conflict. Um, so basically, talking utility board, they stubbed out, coming out of a manhole for a future expansion project, but they didn't run that expansion all the way, and the rest of it, they teed off, and it's in the curb line. So that's one, two, the second part of that was, at some point along West Walnut, all that drainage flows from twenty-one to the culvert by the hospital. There was a twenty-four inch old clay abandoned in the curb line and converted over to a twenty-four inch trunk in the center line of the road. The twenty-four inch trunk, uh, had no access point, except there was one access point at twenty-one, and there was one, I don't think there was one until you got almost to the bridge, where it stubbed into the side of the culvert. Anyways, long story there, there was no way to verify and invert in that run. We, we took the clay pipe invert on the side, assumed we could get flow to the middle, we could not, and then it interfered with sanitary sewer also. So, those two things, and then the third thing at that side, there was an inlet, um, along West Walnut that we were replacing, right where a current inlet is. Well, there's a steel gas line that runs into the back wall of that inlet, and so it was a smaller inlet box, it could not be modified, uh, could not be moved, we asked the gas company, can it be moved over, they said if it was plastic, they could move it, but since it's steel, that name cannot be moved, and so we've gotta basically retrofit that box to get around the gas line. Um, so it's two utilities, and then there was basically an abandoned, there was an abandoned storm line that we didn't know about until we opened it, we found two different junctions that we didn't know were there when we got the road.
And it doesn't, I mean, I'm just repeating what's on here, it doesn't extend the project at all, any of this?
No additional calendar days for it, they've been shut down for almost a week on it, but no additional calendar days.
Good, well, Michael, I'll say this from the improvements that we've already done, uh, what me and you talked, last, last two weeks, we've had a lot of heavy rain, and downtown, we didn't have any trouble that we've been having, so I think we're going in the right direction, it's been a pleasure to work with you and your company, and we thank you for what you've done so far.
I hate coming back, I know, I really do, I don't, but, um, yeah, that one just.
And this totals twenty-one, correct?
Yeah, so they submitted it kinda into their packages, and I had not presented either one of them to the council, so I just combined them together and said, here's their two backup documents, I'm gonna give this to y'all to look at in one package.
Yeah. And these funds come out of American Rescue, so, be covered there, okay, anybody have any questions about it?
Appreciate you, appreciate you, Mike.
Thank you very much for keeping us up to date.
Okay, thank y'all.
Uh-huh. All right, only, now we have, uh, E D T coming in to discuss about the tap grants, um, can you see them, Steve, are they sitting down there? Brandi in there? While I'm waiting on them, uh, Mayor Heigl is reading into the minutes his appointment of Tara, Tara Douglas, to the Plan Commission. We have reading into the minutes, appointing, uh, Taylor Farr is the acting municipal judge effective July seven, uh, June seventeen, and then we appoint either him or somebody else officially as a council, but he's only, uh, immediate temporary judge in there.
Correct.
Action is necessary to recommend from HR, extension on FMLA, we just went over the zoning adjustment hire for, uh, add-on for, uh, Jason Clary, and the change order approval, that's it, so. Oh, okay, yeah. Have they go downstairs?
I don't know where they're. I waved them in. They're, they're coming. Um, back to the Christmas thing before they get in here, our current Christmas tree that we like is.
What happened?
Huh? Somebody put a Christmas tree in the middle of an event park, it's like in the worst location ever.
Is this Laura, is that her idea?
Neither one of us were involved in that decision.
I hope he's enjoying late morning.
So.
All right, Ms. Brady, y'all come on in, introduce yourselves and everybody, and we'll get started.
I'm gonna sit in one of these folding chairs.
And you can sit right there at the head of table if you need to.
Well, I was gonna look here, he needs to come back, he had to run the mystery.
So I'm Brandy Robertson, I'm with Engineering Design Technologies, and I'm the project, one of the project managers on this project.
I'm Zach Robertson with Engineering Design Technologies, and I'm the engineer director. No relation.
All right, and we got Mr. Harry, we dealt, dealt with Harry the whole time.
I'm the engineer director.
He's also the senior vice president.
I'm not sure about still is, but that person's moving on with us, so, and then I'll see.
And what, Brandy, what I'm gonna do is kind of, uh, you know, we, we received your email to answer to our questions and stuff, and we wanna, we know where we're at currently, I guess you'd say, but we need to talk about closing out, cause obviously we can't go after the other grant, the twenty-three, twenty-four grant, without this eighteen, nineteen closing, so we need to focus around closing this, is what the plan is for today.
Okay.
And then I'll kind of repeat what you told me, Brandy, to everybody else, that, you know, they can't start any plans for this new tap grant, because this eighteen, nineteen is a closed out, so they wouldn't get paid or reimbursed or anything for starting any new plans. So initially, you have to submit by the deadline, a hundred percent plans, is that correct, or partial?
Well, we have to have them ready to, um, I request for bid, have them submitted to ALDOT, and then ALDOT submits over to Montgomery and FHWA to get this done.
So, as it stands, they wouldn't, the current deadline probably be able to make, but with the relationship, they said they could pro- possibly get an extension to make, if we close this out soon enough.
That's correct.
So that twenty-three is not, twenty-four is not gone, it's still, it's still out there.
That is correct.
Here's Harry.
How you doing, you got the head of the table? All right, uh, Brandy, I guess you're orchestrating, you can go ahead and, you got anything to touch on that's different from your answers on the email, you can go ahead.
I don't, I don't have anything any different, the biggest thing that we're, of course, I have Zach here, cause he's my superior, um, and he is the senior vice president. So we're just wanting to really hear feedback and see what we need to do to help address any concerns that the city has, and what we can do to get this project closed out, because right now, you guys, you know, we are, we did write the letter, um, for the overruns for ALDOT to take funding, extra funding left over currently on other tap projects, and, um, potentially put that towards your overages, so that would save the city money. So that's sitting out there, so we kind of, you know, whatever we can do to get this closed out, kind of them are pushing for that.
The, you know, some of the stuff, like the trees and shrubs and things like that, um, you know, are we, is that a proven that it was in there? Like the beads, or forgive my ignorance on the terminology, but.
The water beads?
Yeah, was that in there, in the contract and actually put in place?
Yes, and they actually come with the plants, and Keith and Steve both acknowledged that they already had those beads in there when they're in transportation, and they left those in there.
So he, and who are those, is that ALDOT people?
No, that is actually the contractor, mm-hmm, Triple J. Mm-hmm, Triple J, mm-hmm. And then we, you know, we did acknowledge that there were some shrubs and trees that, um, had some fungi. And they did go out and replace that and part of the responses that I sent back were, were the invoices where they did, they paid for those and came back out and replaced those.
So when they replaced, or I mean, it was seen that the, the water beads were, were in there?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, was there any ju- reasoning, was the fungi the reason they died, or what was that?
The ones that previously did, there was some that had fungi and those are the ones that were replaced.
Okay, um.
And any other death was due to lack of watering?
Yes, and we had, we had that, they were never added to the watering, to the watering schedule and that was part of the there was a copy of the email that I put in the responses, because I had touched basically Kim on that, cause you guys have a watering contract.
Oh, Sims.
And you didn't, kind of, when y'all planted on the sun, that's before my time.
Yes, Sims came on right before you.
Contract took, contract took care of all the water before that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um. And you said you needed clarification on number three, or you, do you have your email, uh, at number three?
Trying to get my email pulled up, but I can, I can look at it actually first.
Gray appears to need attention on Broadway, East Side, Fifth and Sixth Street, water backing up the buildings closest to the road.
Yes.
Was this gray confirmed?
Yeah, that was just, we needed clarification on where they were talking about, where that water was backing up. So that we would know, we can look at that, because there were areas that we, that we addressed and there were areas that we didn't touch.
Well, that, did somebody, a representative E D, E D T reach out to come clarify? Cause again, I mean, of course, we're not day-to-day, I'm just trying to get down to.
No, I, cause this came from Win, so therefore I responded directly back to the city attorney, I'm following the protocol that needs to happen.
But you walked after a council meeting with Ronnie Salloway.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, I, I did that after June, and that, that area was actually corrected. The area that we looked at right there behind Papa John's, over in that area, that area, the contractor, Aunt Perry came out and fixed that area. So that one was addressed. This was supposedly an additional one that I've not heard of until.
So you hadn't made it down to make no use yet? You didn't know that area you had.
Because after that council meeting night, no one had reached out to me with any additional comments. So this was the first, what, when Win sent this, this was the first contact I've had regarding any other issues, cause I thought we were closed.
None of this came up in the punch list.
No.
During the pre, uh, pre-planning, there was no asphalt. But, you know, the council, everybody said that they didn't want to put down any asphalt during this contract. Well, to correct some of those areas where the water, you'd have to put new, put your new asphalt in to, to run that water to your drainage areas, so. At, at no time was it, y'all didn't want to put asphalt down with it. And then, I think Reed said that he was gonna pay the alleys.
When he gets some money.
But there's some of the water, that, some of the water issues is right there in the alley too.
Right.
So.
Which is pretty.
All along before we even got here, pre-construction, we mentioned in some meetings that they did, that y'all just wanted to do the asphalt. And that would have helped with all the drainage.
And those are areas that are beyond the scope of.
Yeah, a- absolutely.
So one, uh, the next one, then, I'm just trying to move through as many as I can, the, um. Building owners, West Side, this is where Silicog Glass is, where George and Kurt.
Correct.
Where Silicog Glass is down here, um, to set the curb height and the roadway height is making it where people get out of their cars. The curb height, the doors are hitting the curbs.
Curve height didn't change, as a matter of fact, we lowered it a little bit to meet the ADA requirement. So curb height didn't change as far as people hitting their doors or whatever, opening their doors.
Well, why, and again, I'm playing devil's advocate, cause I'm trying to just go through all this, why would it not have done it before and then done it now, a- after the project?
Well, I asked the landlord, uh, I mean, the glass, the lady's glass, she used to park there that day and I asked her to come open her door and her door never did hit the, hit the curb.
He said it was lowered for me, uh, what, what requirement?
It was lowered to meet your two percent, to meet your.
Normally our curves are designed as standards, the state standard curve, so I'm not sure.
The slope of the road too had a little bit to do with that too, I mean, did, did y'all not, did that some, and that crown in the road?
Not, it's state highway, so we didn't.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Well, I mean. The road stayed like it was, we didn't, we didn't do anything to the road.
Designed for and that's, that's, that's what Aldot's gonna, if we di- deviate from that standard, the curb won't get paid for, so we have to abide by that standard, so if there was, um, you know.
Well, there's elevations on the plans too, on the actual plans that, there's, there's existing elevations there and there is proposed elevations. And all of these went through review processes through the Aldot standard, so the city had time to have input on that also as long as it went through all the proper Aldot channels for design review.
Okay, um, so really, the, the slope of the roadway there plays into effect, I know, I mean, I we can all see how sloped it is, but I, I, I understand what you're saying. Um, next was corner of Fifth Street and Broadway, tire puncture hazard. Jagged edge, great, you know what I'm talking about?
Mm-hmm, and we, that was corrected already, Harry.
Recently?
No, we need to, we need, I'm gonna wait, we weld the, they need a piece of aluminum angle iron, or not aluminum, a piece of metal angle iron welded on the end of that where it would be jagged.
So that's the one last thing.
Before we started doing something, just, you know, before we, we need to wait that meeting. It is still there.
Okay, so that's aware and being handled.
Yes.
I think.
Uh, the grates are installed on Broadway, two hundred block, West Side, behind Sherwin-Williams here. They're collapsing and I think concrete, or concrete's cracked around the grates as well.
So when you went out there, that's the one I confused on this.
But what I'm seeing, that the grates and all are, are not collapsing.
And we actually have pictures to show that.
Yeah, I've got them attached.
You know, there might be some cracks in there, I'm not gonna say they're not, because there's a bunch of eighteen wheelers that have to come through there.
But that's, that's just the cracks.
You know.
That's all that.
But shouldn't that concrete be a certain thickness, cause everybody knows that that's a loading zone anyway. So it shouldn't crack even though those eighteen wheelers are coming through, am I right or wrong on that? Or is that just, I mean?
You know, you're gonna have cracks there. They got, you got them all over your sidewalks out there, people ride up on the side of your sidewalks.
If that ain't but a year old in there.
Yeah, but if they ride up on your sidewalk and stuff, I mean.
You talking about the eighteen wheelers and stuff, some delivering?
We need to, yeah, this, this needs. If that's cracked, it needs to be addressed.
Ben Chief had already discussed the.
That's why I added the pictures from there, so we can address it, because we have, that's why I added the pictures, I mean, existing, the, the trench itself is not collapsing. The concrete is cracked.
And that, see, that, ain't that what we discussed?
Yeah, it's the, it's the concrete.
We didn't pull that concrete in there, I think that was existing, that had already been pulled before we even got there. We didn't do anything to those grates.
So you didn't pull the grate up, y'all didn't touch the grate?
We did the apron too, but we didn't do the, uh, the grates there.
Did we do anything around the grate? There is a crack to. If we, if we did the area that's cracked, then it needs to be, it needs to be fixed.
Yeah, I'm trying to pull the plans right now. To look at it, but we'll, we'll look at that and see what needs to be done.
Anytime you have a corner like that, you're, you're gonna have some cracks, that, and usually that happens on a lot of grates and stuff, but.
We'll look, we're, we're gonna look at that.
Still look at that, might have to a- add some extra rebar and port on the corners.
What my, what, what my plan is, just to give you guys a heads up, is come here, talk to you guys. The questions that we can get resolved, let's get resolved like this, we'll go back, we'll look at the plans and we'll respond back to everybody, so everybody's on the same page of what's gonna happen and what we'll do, if y'all are good with that.
Right.
Since I'm having, for some reason, my computer is just in there spinning.
We got two of them taken care of so far, you know, we're on six, so on seven, that water's still holding in the parking lot. Um, hundred block on Broadway, where is this? Two hundred block was addressed, but not a hundred block.
Right, that's because we just found out about that one.
Oh, that's, we just talked about that, okay.
Yeah, that was the only one that we knew about.
And I think the issue is going back to paving these parking lots, we're gonna have to have some way.
Can we do the same thing we did to fix one hundred to, to two hundred?
Yeah, but I mean.
Same problem.
Uh, yes, yes, the same problem, but it, until you get ready to pave all of it, all of it could be an issue.
Well, they're talking about just the other areas that's holding.
Yeah, we're not talking about that, we know we got a big issue in both, in all of our alleyways, but in those parking spots, where, they used to didn't hold water. Now they do hold water.
It has the curve.
And the same thing on Calhoun behind the furnace.
If it's the same situation.
Yes, or hit the curve.
It has the curve and what we need to do is, we need to do the same thing and just do the trench.
Go in and do it like I'm, like I did in the last.
We'll talk about, we'll, we'll talk about it.
Then, uh, the, uh, I gotta have something tied, or they gotta have something tied to later when they pave it, or it's gonna create the same problem again.
But what I'm saying is, we're gonna go back and look at the plans and we're gonna see what our proposed plan is and then we'll also get.
So when I go in and pave, when I do that, then, then you pave over it, so push the water back in.
Paving over or anything, we gotta correct it.
Okay.
That's, that'll be their issue to deal with when they pave over.
Alright, okay, um, the benches, some of them are mounted too close, if you pull up on the curb, you're gonna hit the bench before you hit the curb.
That's stuff that we can move, we did lay those benches out unbolted for the city's approval before we actually bolted those down. But that's something that we need to do.
Please.
Yeah, we can move those.
Okay.
And a lot of those, I know what you're talking about, the trucks. No, it's, it's where, it's where they jog out.
Coffee shop and then down that, down that way.
And it's primarily the larger vehicles.
Be flagged, like with orange flagging or something.
Yeah, with tie ribbon on the arm or something.
Yeah, cause what it is, is it's the bigger trucks, the, the SUVs and stuff that actually go over.
Or it's got a rush guard on the front.
Press guards and rails and all of those.
I'm getting, Reid, you can mark them up with some tape and ribbon.
Yeah.
Okay, um, no sleeves are ever installed per plans at the handicap parking spaces to put the handicap signs?
Yeah, and we said we'll do that, cause that was missed on everybody's part.
I need the city to come out there and mark that, if you'll mark those where you wanna put them at, then, uh, we'll go ahead and drill in it.
Okay, um.
Yeah, you have one in the middle, right?
Just one in the, yeah.
Yeah, just in the center of it.
But I don't want any cars hitting those either, you know.
We'll mark them, we can do that.
Okay, um.
But once we mark them, we're, we suggest they go, we'll put a dot there, if you, we'll give you a heads up, we're gonna put them there. We prefer you go out there, if you ain't going out there in a day or two, then maybe signs are.
That's fine.
Well, we're not gonna sign that, we're just putting some sleeves.
If we mark them and we get the contractor, it'll be drilled, we're gonna look. Just to let y'all know that.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll send an email, yeah, we'll send an email to everybody.
Okay, some of the brick pavers on the sidewalk on Broadway between Fifth and Sixth Street need to be regrouted, they're uprooted, coming loose. So I think you did respond, we just need to identify those areas to inspect and fix.
I think it's gonna be very similar to what we had on the, on the previous type of project.
Um, elevens, no, out of our hands with A, AT&T.
Yeah.
Um, twelve, too high, we just talked about the curb height on that. And that's it.
And the rest of it just has pictures, just as documentation, the emails that y'all needed, just from the documentation I had.
So we've got two, five, six, seven, eight. And nine will be addressed and, and fixed, and after that's done, we'll be able to close out, if I'm reading this, if I'm interpreting this correctly.
Um, um, like I said, we'll go back and we'll review, we'll review the curb and I'll give you what the elevations were and what the, what the actual build has to, the curve of that is.
Okay.
So you guys actually have that documentation.
Okay.
And then we'll send responses back and let y'all know the game plan, cause we'll go back and walk out there.
So, timing wise, and then what constitutes closure for the purposes of Aldot?
So the, the only thing that Aldot needs is just, you guys have to do a resolution saying we're accepting this project for maintenance. That's it, that's all we need, that's literally all we need.
Please, babe.
Yeah, all, all it is, is closing that out, we've already, all the estimates are, are, I mean, they've been up to date, Yo has been turning ones in, getting reimbursed. It's strictly just the closeout process of just saying, Silicog understands, we're taking this over for maintenance, we're done with this. And then we, you know, we can start on the twenty, twenty-three, cause the.
So time, so time table, a week?
Well, we need to walk this tonight and while we're all three here, we're gonna go walk these sites and look at the drainage concerns. Because if it's, if that drainage concern is like what I walked in the Papa John's, it's just a small area that's puddling, just like what that was. And it's just a matter of doing a trench or doing something and then you guys, you know, whenever that.
They could, they could call on me every time it rains, cause it'll be fixed.
But I need people to contact me, guys, this is the biggest thing, is I haven't heard anything since last June. If y'all had issues, I like talking to Win, I don't mind talking to Win, but I prefer someone would contact me directly, either by email, by phone, by something.
Can I, can I ask a question? We're getting back to the water, the water, um. Help me.
Water.
Water beads.
Water beads.
Can you send some specs to that so we can look at where they were implanted at?
Well, they're just part of the package, like when, when he went and picked up the pots of the, and then from the nurseries, they're in there, cause that's what the nurseries use.
Alright, so there are no specs of?
No, and they're not, it's not a, it's not a long-term, it's not a long-term plan.
I was just thinking with this whole big project, there was specs for, you know, every little detail.
We need to find out why Semtuck didn't get that added to their maintenance schedule.
Reid said they didn't, they didn't, uh, it wasn't in their contract when we hired them.
No, it wasn't, because that contract was released prior to it bidding, cause that's when we were working on the other, on the other stuff that we're working on.
Yeah, but didn't it add something like a hundred dollars per or something? No, that was after.
That was for baskets. Things y'all got now.
No, there's something before that. There's something before that.
But, but in.
Reid don't remember that, guys.
But in that, in the, in the response that I did, I put the email from Kim where I asked, hey, has this been added to the watering schedule? And she said, no, that had not been added to the watering schedule, so those are things, I mean, it just, it really needs to happen. And, you know, unfortunately, the rain that came, that y'all got, y'all got hit twice with pretty bad flooding, that never helps. And I will say, this contractor went above and beyond their scope of work, because after y'all had the first flood, they came back and relayed the pine straw. They were a much better contractor to work with to actually get this project completed. And they did a great job compared to what the two thousand and fifteen type of project was.
What's the timeline you guys may think, just off the top of your head, of getting all of our errors corrected?
Well, she said after she walked it, can you just give us an update in the morning, can you send an email like within a, a timeframe in the morning after you walk it?
Yeah, we gotta give a contract.
We gotta give a contractor.
Issue we're gonna run into is we're coming up on a, a holiday.
Yes, sir.
A lot of contractors.
Sure, we know it'll be sometime after the fourth.
So it'd be after the fourth, so it, it, I would, we can have sometime in July.
That'd be, that'd be great, July August, we're, we're just, you know.
July would be great, cause sooner then we'd close out and start on the twenty-two, twenty.
We're the same way, we wanna close out quick.
So is eighteen and nineteen not closed because all this is completed, nobody signed off saying it's good to go, it's done.
Y'all have to have a resolution.
Yeah, y'all have to have a resolution saying that y'all have that.
Y'all will take over maintenance.
And I will say, I'm gonna have Zach, Zach's copied on the emails anyway, he's normally copied on my emails, but I will be completely out of the country from July fifth until the twenty-seventh of July.
July fifth is a good day.
Yes, sir.
I'll be out of the, I will be out of the country for three weeks, so Zach, it will be your point of contact during the month of July.
I like that.
Just to give you a heads up.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, I think we'll, no more in the morning, just shoot us email. Thank you.
Alright.
Thank y'all. Alright, guys, I went over the rest of the email, the rest of the, uh, stuff on the agenda tonight, very short meeting, so we'll stay in the jern and meet downstairs.